As you can see, Michael wasn't able to attend. He's out of town, so I am filling in. I feel a little rushed today. I'm sorry. I had to OSB and LPC before this, so I'm sorry about that. And we will start with accentuate the positive. Shauna, oh, you're all prepared. Thank you so much.
Happy New Year, everybody. I'm Shauna Schleif, Principal here at Phoenix Elementary School, and it is Board Appreciation Month, so just I want to say thank you to the board. We really truly have the best board in the world. I loved the video that Joe put together. I don't know if you had a chance to see it, but it just was a great testament to to all the work that you do, so just want to express our gratitude. And you have some gifts in front of you. You know, we just celebrated Christmas a couple of weeks ago, but we also celebrated Christmas yesterday with the Ashland Community Health Foundation. They had donated mittens and and hats to all our students here at Phoenix Elementary and at Talent Elementary. And so some of their board members came over and it was so exciting to see kids just get excited about gloves and hats. And they were super appreciative and just really it brought a lot of cheer to our first day back at school. Our first day back on campus was not our first day back at school, but we did have in-service. I just want to thank the board again for supporting that time to learn together. Our teachers have, you know, we ask students to come to school every day and learn, and then we're also asking our teachers to do the same. So we had a lot of learning around our new grading, our new grade book, our our standards-based report card. And so we're still learning how to input all of that. So the teachers did a great job of just putting their learning caps on. And Heather's going to talk a little bit about the Amplify training. And then I just want to also share another resource that we are going to be offering, our staff, which is pretty exciting. This, there's a thing called the Community Resilience Model, which is some training that's that's therapeutic training on after we learn about ACEs and trauma-informed practice, what next? You know, what what can we do to help support staff who are who are experiencing some stressors? And and then, so we have this wonderful series of trainings that are going to be available for for our elementary staff coming up. And so I'm pretty excited about that, so wanted to share that with you. So that's what we have going on at PES. Here, Heather.
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. I hope everybody had a good holiday season. Echo Shauna, like, we couldn't say enough about how much we appreciate our board. Hi, Polly online. It's nice. It's really probably a rare occasion when we can say our board members are also our friends and family. So I just it's a unique situation we have, so we love you and hope you appreciate the treats we've done for you. Online of in-service, part of our day at elementary was also spent with training with our Amplify curriculum leaders. And I know at the middle school they did too. So I just want to say thanks to Tiffany, really, because she really has advocated for us to get the most high-quality instruction from those people in professional development since the beginning. And so we've been really been fortunate to have some really good training and really understanding how to use these tools the right way. So thanks to Tiffany. Also, I want to say a big thanks to, I don't know, I know Rebecca was there, I don't know if the rest of you got to make it to our winter concert over at Talent Middle School. It was amazing. So I just want to send a shout out to Wendy Savage, our music teacher. She did an incredible job organizing and also thanks to, you know, my colleagues from the middle school for allowing us to have it there because goodness gracious, there was never enough room at Talent Elementary for that. So it was just a big hit and looking forward to growing that program. Also, I wanted to share that we are bringing back the in-person talent show. Oh, yeah, it's a pretty big deal. So that will be coming up on February 9th, which will have it over here at the high school in the Rose Theater. So put that on your calendars. It should be fun. We're trying to hype it up with the kiddos and there's no shortage of cuteness as these ladies recall. The talent show is a pretty big deal, right? And that's it from talent. I'll kick it to Raymond.
Thank you. Brandon Hammond Orchard Hill Elementary. Happy New Year, all those superlatives. Before I share my appreciation, I will echo the in-service training that we had on Tuesday. So throughout education, it always seems to be focused on the teachers. And we have really emphasized all staff. So classified received some amazing training. We also were introducing a Playworks program, which is a structured recess. So they received some more training on that, but it is very impressive that we're not just thinking about the teachers, but all the all the staff. And the classified just yearn for that kind of training, just a great opportunity for them. And I also, and I think we've said it before, but honestly, right before we left to break, our office at Orchard Hill was just full of packages. And Katie McCormick went above and beyond, and I might get a little emotional because you see the families coming in and it is such such a help in this time. And I think it obviously needs to be year-round, but it is, it's very neat to see the the support that the families get and the effort that was put in to give those families. And then my analogy for the board. So for the past two weeks, I have been breaking my back, moving. We are totally moved in. We are all unpacked. And one of the big items that we have is a piano that has followed us probably, I think it has been 20 years. Every place we've been, we've had this piano. And there is a very cool invention called moving straps. And you just, you put the strap on like a backpack, you have someone else on the opposite side of you. You slip the strap other under the heavy, you know, whether it's a piano or a big dresser, whatever, and then you shrink it down and lift. And I was thinking about this, the board is like this strap that helps me go above and beyond what I possibly could do. And as a district, being very new, I am so impressed of what you have allowed and created for not only the students and the families, but the faculty. It really is impressive. So again, thank you so much.
Board members that really appreciates me, so I wanted to make sure that he was here to hear it all. Just a few quick things from PTRA. Wanted to share with you guys, our enrollment has increased 24% in the last three weeks, actually. We have 10 new students that have joined us since the middle of December. Three, three elementary, six middle, and one new high school student. We've got a total of 52 students that we're serving right now, so we're excited about that. Also wanted to share, we had a field trip first through eighth grade to Science Works just before the break, and that went really well. We had members of each of our grades there. And we had along with parents and younger siblings and grandparents, all involved, all engaged. Really, nobody wanted to leave. All kinds of STEM activities there that they were really engaged in. So that was good stuff. And then finally, we had a kind of informal poll among our students and our staff. And they want to share that they're strongly in favor of winter break. And so if you guys were considering canceling that, don't. That's one of your most popular policies is winter break. And so keep that going. You guys are getting high marks there. That contributes to your gift, which comes from PTRA, the local chocolate. So hope you guys enjoy that.
Good evening. I want to just start by saying thank you, of course, to the board. I echo, I don't have a analogy like Brandon, but I'll go with that. I too feel like you're the support of the lifting straps. What'd you call them? Lifting straps. So yes, thank you for all your support. Our positives, we're just, we're excited to start our winter activities. We wrapped up our basketball, our boys' basketball, but our girls' basketball season is getting underway as well as our wrestling season. Is that helpful? There we go. And so kids are getting out and doing tryouts right now for those activities, which is exciting. And also, we had a band concert, the same on our last board meeting night, we had a band concert happening at Talent Middle School, so that was a highlight as well. So we want to thank Brett Eason, as well as Jamie Dipburner, for the work that they do with our musicians at Talent Middle School. And then just in general, I think for me, the in-service day was great, and there was kind of a party. It's like, oh, this is such a nice day. Like, it's just adults and I'm kind of catching up and I'm talking to teachers. But then it was so fun for me the next day when the kids were actually there, because then I had like this wave of like, oh, my gosh, but this is really fun, like, in-service was great. But it's so fun to have the kids back. And we're just excited that the last two days, yesterday and today, felt really good in the building with the students. And I know Rick was pretty surprised by our number of referrals that report out that I did that a couple of months ago. But we have seen a decline in our referrals since then. So we are feeling really good about, the kids are understanding, I think, a lot more the expectations and kind of what what we want to see in them. And so we're starting to see that number drop off quite a bit. So, yep.
Hi, everyone. Kaylin Cross, the high school. And I wanted to start also by thanking you all. How am I standing in front of people? Can I stand here? Is that a, I know, but then I'm covering everybody else. Sorry. One of the things I wanted to say is I have never really seen the involvement from a board that I see from you all from the event just earlier this week that Dawn and Sarah put on for the legislative situation. I also think I've never seen a board member DJ a dance, sing the National Anthem in front of the school for the assembly, because we didn't have someone to do that, or like take tickets or any of the things that you all do. Yell loud and proud at sporting events, all those kinds of things. So I know you've heard it from everybody, but again, thank you so much for what you do. We appreciate you so much. Some positives from before the break, I wanted to start by shouting out to our student leadership and leadership advisor, Lisa Robin. One of the things that I know from being in high school is that a lot of times the hype and the vibe of school spirit really matters. And it does at Phoenix High School too, but I've never seen a group of leadership students so focused on their community. I was able to spend some time with the leadership class before we left for break, and I got super emotional, embarrassingly enough, in front of them. But just focused on coat drives and sock drives, wrapping presents for kids, delivering those, just really going above and beyond to serve their community. And so I just want to make sure that if you see any of those students or you see Lisa Robin, that you would share just how great that is. Another positive from before break, we, if you walk through the halls at the high school, you would have noticed that was very festive. We do a hallway decorating event that a couple of teachers supervise, and it's it's themed. We had like a Grinch-themed hallway. We had like a Polar Express-themed hallway. And so that was really fun. And just, you know, a lot of times right before break, you're like crawling to the end. You see that in students and staff. But just with those kind of events, Spirit Week, I'm really able to finish strong before we left for break, and I think that really helped the the culture and climate of our building. So I wanted to shout out to them. Also, counseling and student management and our our compass teacher, which is our alternative program, have been working really hard lately. As the honeymoon of the fall kind of ends, we we get into a harder season and we start seeing interventions that work for a lot of students, not work for a smaller percentage. And so this team has just repeatedly come together over and over again to put together individualized plans for students, try new things, reinvent the wheel, reinvent the wheel again. And so I really want to make sure that we highlight the hard work that they're doing. And additionally, our special education department has a lot of new staff members, a lot of new EAs, new teachers. And that can, that can create a lot of uneasiness, but at the high school, we've been able to band together and do a lot of really great things. Thank you to Tiffany for organizing a lot of camaraderie and collaboration and just being able to do those things together. We had a staff meeting, sped staff meeting before the break, and it was just really great to see everybody collaborating. And so that's all from high school.
Evening, board and community members. I'm Summer Brandon. I'm the school director at Armadillo Tech, just down the way, our public charter school in Phoenix, Talent. And I'm excited to accentuate some really pretty cool positives. One is just yesterday, we got to do the first grad walk of this term, which is a student who completed with a GED, their high school journey. And so they got to wear their capping gown and get their picture taken. They went from class to class and had their peers and staff cheer for them. It was really incredible. We're on track to have potentially two more finished this term, which ends up in about two more weeks, two and a half more weeks, which is exciting. On the staff side, I'm excited to say we have two new staff joining us at ATI. One is a new office administrator, Amanda, who's coming to us from other fields, but is really excited to learn and connect with kids and help us make sure that administratively, we're solid in our office. So if you call ATI, you'll be just talking with Amanda. Say hi, introduce yourselves. And we have a new person coming on from Project Youth Plus. Angelina is joining. She's bilingual Spanish, which we're really excited about. And she's already just going gangbusters, getting some things ready for our students to do some industry tours. So really excited for her to be there. And finally, we had this term, we have a new science teacher this year who's really interested in making sure that students are doing science, not just learning science. So she's been teaching a watersheds class where they've been going down to bioswales and learning ways to deal with stormwater specifically. So they're proposing solutions for our building redesign for stormwater treatment. So they'll be presenting those to our architects in the next week or two, some small scale and large scale that we're going to ask our architects to integrate into the actual building design that we submit to the city in just about a month. So great things happening at ATI. And on a personal level, in terms of celebrating your board, historically, not too long ago, we didn't really know each other. And I'm really glad that, I appreciate the welcome that your board has given our school and our board members to come to events, to abiding to things. And that's a new level of relationship. And I think I appreciate that leadership, the way that relationship is part of the operation of the board here in this district. So thank you for being here and thank you for your service, whether you are a longtime or new board member. Who else is accentuating positives? I'm going to hand it off. Excellent. There you go, friends.
I do have an accentuate the positive, and Kaylin mentioned it a little bit, but wanted to share the hard work that Sarah and Dawn put together on Tuesday about the legislative event. We had our student reps there as well, serving our local board members and local legislators to have a good discussion leading up to this, this very difficult and challenging legislative session coming up. So I know that was a lot of work, the coordination, having it on the day everybody gets back. But I thought it was amazing. I've talked to board members and superintendents, has been around for a long time, and that's a first for our region. So thank you for doing that.
Anyone on the board that has accentuate the positive?
I just want to say thank you to all the folks that put these baskets together. They are beautiful. Oh, my goodness. I feel like I'm in a concert for reals. It's like so loud. They're beautiful, and I'm so excited. And food is my love language, so even greater appreciation for all the sweet, wonderful things that were gifted to us. Thank you all.
Anyone else? I will go. So as you guys, as we mentioned, Sarah and I did the legislative reception, and it would not have been possible without the staff, the, yeah, totally. We asked for things and everyone was like, sure, yeah. And so we really appreciate the support we're getting from staff and friends. When we say, hey, we want to put together this together at our facilities, and they said, yes. Apparently, everyone does not put it together at their facilities. And they do it differently. We had to leave our OSBA meeting before when they were talking about it. But we were the first group, I guess Portland's done it for 10 years, Ben Lupine has done this for eight. And we're the first group that involves, they have involved their student reps, but students in a different way. The FFA did our centerpieces, amazing job. The Grants Pass Orchestra came and played for us, amazing job. So we did get kudos for that. We're the first region to ever have an orchestra play for our legislators. So that was good. The the church donated plates. I mean, there was things that we were, we had a small budget of $500. Some of the other regions charged for school board members to come because they can't go under that budget. We were under budget, so we're thankful. The reason we were is because our community backed this and our district backed this. That is why. So thank you so, so much for supporting our wonderful idea, and I think it went out, went good, and I think we'll have some in the future. And again, thank you for these lovely baskets and the kind words that you all gave us. Okay, next up is the rep, oh, I forgot one more thing. OSBA was there as well, and they were so impressed with our student reps. This is a good segue. They said, oh, my gosh, your student reps, we've talked to many student reps, and they're like, oh, yeah, we like it. And they're like, no, your student reps love being on your board. Like, they're so excited and so happy, and they want to be here and they want to be part of this. And so they're looking at ways we can involve our student reps during this legislative session, and so I look forward to seeing how that turns out. And we can report back. And they were all happy. I'm like, you guys want to do more? And they all said yes, like, not even thought about it. They were saying yes before I even finished my sentence. So I appreciate, I appreciate them. Okay, so off to student reps. Who would like to go first?
Hi. I just wanted to say how before break, we had a really good Spirit Week. And our assembly was really great, too. We played some fun games. We got a lot of people involved. So that was great, but we could probably see some more improvements from our just involvement, just from throughout, like, everyone in COVID. And just everyone's like involvement and stuff has been like down, kind of. And so I think we could just work on getting everyone more involved, leadership. We're working on trying to get, like, hold some more assemblies so we can get more people involved. And yeah, I think our assembly weren't really great, but improvement will be enormous.
I wanted to agree, our assembly did go very well, as well as our Spirit Week. And I wanted to talk about our Spirit Week a little bit. As Ms. Cross said, everyone is just ready for this, for the winter break. And I personally have just never had as much fun in the last week of school before break, ever, besides this year. Like, I do agree, involvement would be good, more involvement, but from what I saw, like, a lot of people were involved. And just like, it made me so happy just seeing people after school and before school, working on all the hallways and just like really caring about our school spirit and showing up. And I really think that we stepped it up, and I just had so much fun. Like, I think our leadership did really good with putting that on and organizing everything. And I think that everyone just had a great time, and it was really good.
Thank you so much. Next up is citizens comments. Is there anyone online or in present that would like to say anything before I say all the things I have to say before you speak? I'm not seeing anybody in chat. I'm not seeing anybody in person. Okay, we'll move on to superintendent report.
Thank you very much. I just want to echo everybody that's said amazing things about the school board. It's been a very challenging couple of years, and this board's been steady, student-focused, and extremely engaged. The caramel apples in there are always at Rick's request, and they will always be in that basket. So I learned early on when I brought caramel apples when I was principal at Orchard Hill, and Rick's wife loved them, so we're still in with. But it's just, it's just amazing to have such a supportive board. And, you know, just talking about, we've talked a lot about the Alameda Fire Recovery and how gauge this board was. But just leading through a pandemic, the commitment to just having, make sure every student belongs and has a place in our schools. The overall engagement, like Kaylin was saying, just at our events and in how much you support our kids. So it is unique. I don't think we'll ever take it for granted. We understand that this is a special place, and just thank you for all you do. Also, I'd like to take this time just to share my thanks to this team. It's a good reminder this month, especially just because as we come back from a holiday season, busy holiday season leading up to it in December, we really come back to a busy time. We came back to an in-service day to get prepared for, and our our team did that amazing. We're ending a semester here in a few weeks. We're putting together integrative guidance to do a four-year strategic plan this year. We're negotiating with our our employee groups. We are, and we're continuing to serve our community and our our kids. So just want to thank our team here. It's amazing. And just feel so blessed to have such an amazing team. I want to mention, you've heard about the Talent Urban Renewal process and plan. I want to just share a little bit. I don't want to get too far into this tonight, but I think we really need to potentially craft a letter from the board to the Talent Urban Renewal Agency process. And the written comment is due, I think, in the middle of February. And the reason I say that is typically that property tax doesn't affect our funding because it's backfilled with the state school fund. And so we'll get the same amount anyway. I just want to put a word of caution out there because more than ever, I think you heard it there the other night, state school fund is being talked about and potentially reworking on how schools are allocated that fund. Does that have an impact on what the property taxes we get? I don't know moving forward, but that's a 30-year commitment that I think we'll have to be very clear about kind of some of the things we need to share with that decision. Because we are by far the biggest impacting taxing district out of that whole process. So I'll be talking more about the board with that. It might be a discussion on our work session a little bit to send a letter and share kind of our thoughts. I want to end just with, I sent an email out this week, or maybe even last week, about a grant we got from the federal government, and it has to do with mental health and what it means to our district. We just found out this week that only four, four entities in the state have received a grant like this, and we were one of them. It was pretty incredible. And this was a lot of hard work by a lot of people. We actually had to put it together, when I say we, I mean Kelly. Had to put it together in in just a few days. And and, you know, we heard over the break that we got $2.6 million over five years to support our students' mental health and really develop a mental health cohort that could serve our whole region. So Kelly, I don't know if you want to share anything else on that.
One of the opportunities, one of the pieces was how quickly could we, how quickly could we use the opportunity and really move with it, January 3rd? So we are immediately, La Clinica is clearly one of our strongest partners in this, and they will immediately be doing some really exciting things, starting with a health center at Phoenix High School, an additional school therapist, a school counselor to come at Talent Middle School. health center at Phoenix High School, an additional school therapist, a school counselor to come at, um, Talent Middle School, additional community care. I mean, just, we'd love to share more as we, um, as we get going. I don't want to take your time, take up too much time tonight, but it's just an incredible opportunity that we're very excited about and, and hopeful for.
Thanks, Kelly. Um, it is, it is amazing that I think our district our size really gets a federal grant, and, um, we, it does have, uh, additional support in for Yasmin for grant management, because I know there are so many grants coming down the pipe, and so we have posted a special programs grant manager as well, too, that's in this, uh, budget. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Brent? Hearing none, we will move to the consent agenda, which will be the approval of this agenda, the approval of minutes, um, from the last meeting, and the personnel report. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second there.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Nancy. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will approve the consent agenda. We will move on to action items. The ATI charter renewal is up. Did you want to start us off?
Yeah, I'll just share, um, we talked about this last time, and, um, you know, Summer put it pretty well. We're, we're connected more than we've ever been. Um, I think in, in this district, and, and really, uh, worked well together. Um, I'd recommend the board to approve that renewal, uh, which starts the process of, uh, kind of negotiating a contract, and we had a big lift last time we negotiated the contract because it had to be updated. It hadn't been updated in a long time, so, uh, we're hopeful that it won't take as long, and, uh, we can work on an agreement.
What big changes five years makes, because five years ago, there was really a conversation about, um, whether or not this partnership would still work. And so, um, what a great place to be, um, at this stage, and every time we're around anyone, we're like, Summer Brandon, it's great at ATI. I mean, she just, I am so appreciative of how you serve your students, like, where they are. You're just such a great example for that, and so I'm thrilled that, um, Dole Tech is part of the Phoenix Town family, and just really have appreciated, um, growing that relationship with you and your staff and your board over, and I love hearing your graduation stories. Oh, my goodness, they're just phenomenal, and really just, um, how personal you make graduation, uh, about each individual student. It's, anyway. Um, I don't know if anyone else has anything to say, but I wholeheartedly move that the board approve the ATI charter renewal for a five-year period from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Rick. Any other discussion anyone wants to add? Okay, I will take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yeah.
Oh. Uh, Rick?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Uh, Sarah?
Yes.
And Polly?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It is moved. Thank you very much, Summer. We appreciate you. Now is time for a recess, so I move, we're all okay taking like a short ten-minute recess, okay? Um, we will take a short ten-minute recess and be back. Thank you, everyone, for letting us, am I on, taking a short break? Oh, there we go. Next up is facilities and bond update, and John, I believe you have some great things to tell us.
Okay. So first of all, let me start off with mimicking Brent, Brent, that I really, um, appreciate the board's support. Sorry, I guess I'm not loud enough. I really appreciate the board's support. You guys are incredible, and you know, he went back as far as the fires, and I'm going to go back to the, the bond when, uh, several of you were outgoing door-to-door and making sure that the community knew how much we needed this, and, um, you guys are amazing, all of you, uh, both new and old. Okay, let's get started. Um, first of all, um, we are proposing to put a ADA fitness playground using S R two funds at the high school. That's in your blue folder. I did bring kind of a color illustration. Uh, this would be up by the concession stand, uh, between the concession stand and the fence where the railroad tracks are. It would have some exercise equipment as well as, uh, wheelchair, like, um, rotating thing. Um, we're trying to, we were trying to do something for TLC, but that would include the high school students, so the athletes can go up and work out on the equipment as well. And then maybe at games, younger kids could go play on it, too. So we'll be looking at that again, hopefully, for a vote next meeting. Also, let's see, um, I'm working with the City of Talent and Rogue Climate on a plan to install solar at T M S and T E S using renewable energy grants. And working with them's been pretty awesome because they've offered to help with other grants, so along with that, um, there's a couple of other grants that are new that they're helping me pursue. Let's see, we, we applied for the seismic grants in December for T E S and T M S and should get results in May. So keep your fingers crossed. I know I will. Um, I'm also working on with Rogue Climate, uh, applying for the Renew America School Grant to help offset some of the costs of the seismic upgrades for T E S and T M S. Um, that grant could be used to pay for wall insulation, roofing, additional insulation, and window upgrades. Um, we would also try to tie in S D eleven forty-nine funds in hopes that it would, um, leave additional funds to apply to Culver Field later. Um, we have hired H M K to aid in contracts for T M S, T E S upgrades, uh, seismic upgrades, and the school-based health center at P H S, and the design of Culver Sports Park. So all of that stuff's in motion. And that's it, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions, Sarah?
So is the, um, ground of the playground, um, that really nice tile squishy, um, for ADA similar to what is at Blue Heron?
It's similar, but better.
Oh, okay.
It's actually poured, and in your blue folder, you'll see this. It's a five-inch-deep poured pad.
I don't know, oh, did I not go, oh, I didn't go far enough.
It's in the very back page.
It's a five-inch-deep poured pad. Nice.
Yes, so we'll, we'll put curbs all the way around the perimeter, um, as well as handrail where that little retaining wall is. And then, uh, this gets poured even with that curb, even with the top of it.
Oh, okay.
So wheelchairs, everything will be able to roll right onto it. We'll have an asphalt path coming off of the asphalt path that goes up to the bleacher.
Okay.
It'll come off of there, and so you'll, you'll roll up there. If you're, you'd roll up there, and then you'll roll down the path and right onto the playground, and the very first thing is that wheelchair.
The, um, merry-go-round. Ground type of thing. Is that, that might be similar to what's at, at the, at Blue Heron. We were impressed at, with the accessibility of the playground at Blue Heron when we were at its opening, and so I'm really excited to see that there'll be something like this at the high school, and I remember Tiffany saying, um, swings, a swing was important. Are we getting, is, are we getting this? Are we getting a swing?
There's not a swing.
There's no swing?
Last year, we did our engagement sessions for, um, our student investment account in Esser, and the idea for a playground came out of our listening session with our students with disabilities at the high school, and in particular, our TLC. We had, um, a session where we used some different augmentative communication kind of, um, arrangements, and they asked for a playground. The thing is, is that a lot of our students are above the age and height and weight requirements of traditional playground structures at the high school. So we needed to find equipment that not only fit in a small footprint, but that was age-appropriate. And so, using more of an exercise equipment is very high school appropriate. It's, it's not, you know, it doesn't look different than others, and, um, then we were able to add that twirly thing. We used to call it the merry-go-rounds, but it's like a wheelchair-accessible one. I used to have great fun on those, and I'm thinking we would fly off, though. This one has a railing around it. It looks much safer than what I'm used to. Um, that, um, would be something fun, but didn't take as much space as a swing. John could probably explain how much a swing takes, and Blue Heron's great, and the, like, um, the zip line thing, but it takes so much space and then falls face around. And Dave wouldn't let me have the whole high school, um, as a playground. He said, like, there needs to be concession stands and a track, and so.
She tried for the turf field, too, but I said no. Actually, the swings take about fifteen feet front and back, so a little over thirty feet. We didn't have the footprint for that.
I'm sure there's measurement on here. How big is this?
Fifty feet by twenty-two feet.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-one six, something like that.
And, um, do we need to suspend the rules and move it up so you can buy equipment sooner?
No, I think we're fine if we wait until the very next meeting. I, Denise was, I have to say, awesome, because I didn't get the final price until this morning, and she was able to get it in the blue folder so that we could make it an action item next time. So thank you to Denise.
Um, if we sign up for Amazon Prime, can we get the four thousand dollar freight fee, um, free? But I was like, for granted, great, wow, okay.
To be fair, it's really heavy. It took an entire truck last time for Talon Elementary.
Fine. I really appreciate the follow-through on this from an idea that just, I just love this sister, from the idea and requests from listening sessions and how use money and what, um, would really be helpful and, and encourage our students to, to seeing it happen. Just really appreciate the follow-through and the intentionality, and, um, I just love it. Thank you. Super excited.
I shouldn't highlight one member that's not here, and that's Breezy Chapman, because I can't make it through the high school without her cornering me to ask about her playground. So she is definitely advocated and should get some credit.
I think she has Hawkeyes, because when I go in there, like, oh, like, she yells my name, and I have no idea where she's even at.
That's when I get faster. She yells my name, and I'm like.
I also just want to mention that, um, as you know from all the bond work, we have, we've leveraged so many funds on so many funds on so many funds, and it just really doesn't end. There's, there's some big grants for solar, for renewable schools, um, a- and just some big federal grants, and just commend John for trying to maximize what we can get into our next seismic projects, because that can save money for, uh, bond-appropriate language, uh, swimming pool, maybe, um, for, uh, Culver Road, so, um, it just, it just continues to, um, be on the forefront on how we can access as many possible funding sources and use them appropriately, so. Thanks to John and his team.
Thank you. Any other questions for John? I have a few. I apologize. Um, I don't think you're shocked that I have questions, though. So first of all, thank you very much for kudos on the accessible, um, equipment. My question is, is it going to be available to the public at any time, or only during, like, um, when we have events?
It would be just for public events, so, uh, football games, track events, things like that. It, it'll be accessible and students. It's, it's back behind the secure areas, so.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, and then, um, I think it's great, especially I just read an article yesterday about how our power bills are going up in the region, and so I think it's a great time for doing solar, and I'd like to hear more. I know you're just at the beginning stages, but I'd really like to know more about how that's going to work and the, um, batteries and how we're going to be in emergency service, and as you know, we're, we can, our household can live off the grid, so I'm very interested on how that's going to work, and I have lots of unique questions that I might ask you offline.
Anytime. Um, we are working on, uh, the overall goal, it was done with a talent, City of Talent grant, and the overall goal was to actually have some battery backup for the community, so if an event like Alameda Fire happened, we would have some, something to fall back on, and that is the intent, and that's the intent of the design, and also the grants that we are applying for have been specifically chosen because they're for resilience.
Perfect. I think that's so important. And then my last and final question is the P H S Health Center. Where is that going to go?
Be determined tomorrow morning. I have a meeting tomorrow morning. They have a pretty good idea, I think, where they want it. Um, but we're going to talk logistics and impact tomorrow morning.
I look forward to hearing more about it.
Awesome. On that, if the board would like, I do have about four years' worth of energy, um, calculations, uh, that I maintain on a spreadsheet, but I'd be happy to share with you to, you could actually see what we've done over the past five years, uh, energy-wise, and how we say, use all of our bond dollars and our incentives and everything to maximize our energy savings. It's pretty impressive.
I think we, I believe we all would, and I remember several years ago, I can't remember how long, but we've had, the board had several talks about energy, um, efficiency. Yeah, geez, it was when Marina was on the board. Um, and so it's great to see that planning go through, and we're at a stage where we're doing great at it, so thank you so much. Anybody want to add anything?
Game Time's local, right? They're, they're a local vendor, aren't they?
Up north.
Up north, but, okay.
Oregon.
Oregon.
Not, uh, there's one in Grants Pass. We have worked with them. Actually, P E S's playground is from them.
Okay, moving on to the financial update.
Yeah, the only, uh, update that, that we have is I just want to make sure I put that bug in here about the, uh, Tura, um, letter that we might be writing, and the next two months, um, typically, we have the financial report on the second meeting of the, uh, month, but I think the next two months, February second and March second, uh, Yasmin will have financial reports, um, for the board instead of that second meeting, because we don't really have a second meeting at the work session this time. March is the same way.
Thank you. Um, legislative and OSBA update. Do you want to go first? You want me to? So, okay, so as you heard already, um, we had the legislative reception. I had a couple of questions when I was in the audience, so I was just going to say a little bit about it. Um, it's something that, it's a regional event that people up, schools up north have been doing for a while, ten to eight years. We just found out that OSBA was giving a, um, fifty to five hundred dollar budget to have these events, and so Sarah and I said, we, we got to do it, so we jumped right in, kind of blind, and, um, had an event. It was all the school districts in our region, which is thirteen, and the, um, charter schools, and the boards came, and some superintendents came. Um, we gave everyone a chance to talk about their challenges and, um, their successes, and what, um, they would like to see in the next legislative session. The main, um, topics or themes was adequate funding and flexibility, um, for different legislations. Sometimes when things come down the pipe, sometimes legislators think of what's best for their district, and sometimes it's like what's best for Salem or Portland, and sometimes that doesn't work here as much. Sometimes we need a little bit of flexibility, um, to do things, and I know, um, I had been on some calls with the governor, for example, and someone had mentioned, we should do this, and I was like, that's not going to work in our region, and the governor's like, that would not work in Jackson County at all. We just didn't have the, it was what, they wanted us to use county services, and we just didn't have the capabilities to do that or have our families go to county services. That was just something that wasn't available. We don't have buses that goes to the county services like they do up in Portland. So make sure that everyone's, um, really cautious about when the bill is passed, how that's going to work in every district, and to make sure that, that, that we're caught, um, very knowing and making sure that we talk about it so that we pass something that will work for our families. What else? We just had an LPC meeting, an OSBA meeting right before this. Legislation session, I'm pulling up my notes right now, legislation session. The governor will be sworn in on Monday, so will the new legislators. They'll be doing training, they'll be unpacking, they'll be getting ready for bills. And then everything starts off on the seventeenth. And Sarah and I will be on calls on Fridays to give you guys updates. If you have any questions, any concerns, any certain bills you want to be tracked, let us know. We'll be sending out emails regionally, so keep an eye on those if you want. And we'll probably have lots of updates throughout the time. And I'm sure Brent will add some stuff as well. We plan to be really proactive and engaging in this legislation session and making sure that we're following the bills and we just know what's going on. It's really important, so. Sarah, did you want to add anything?
No, it was, well, yes, I said no and then I started talking, which you're all so surprised about. It was really great to see the networking that happened after, at the legislative reception that after we gave the opportunity for each district to speak about challenges or what was going well. And we really did beat the drum of funding and local controller flexibility and trying to gain the trust of the government legislative body to really let school districts determine how to meet the needs of the students in their district. If we could have some of that flexibility, I think that each district knows their families and knows what they need. And so to be able to have that trust, I think is vital. And we're really, our district's very fortunate to have Greg in our corner keeping track of things as well for us. And so we're we're planning to dive deep and be involved and looking forward.
Do you want to add anything?
Okay.
Any questions for Sarah and Raj? Okay, moving on, we'll go to equity, diversity and inclusion.
I'll just give a quick update on our EDI Advisory Committee. We have been meeting monthly since we got started at the end of October. So it already feels like it's January, but, because it is January. But it it just feels like we got, we got late, we got started a little late, but it's really a very engaged group of people. And I'm very excited about the enthusiasm, the thoughtfulness, the important conversations that we're having. Right now, we are addressing the Equity Policy, JBB, and the request to really dive into that with some possible recommendations for how to make that more actionable. Our December meeting was right before the winter holiday break, so we had quite a few people that couldn't make it. And yet we really had this wonderful opportunity to break things down and be almost ready to to present some recommendations to the superintendent and the school board and hope we can do that after our February meeting. That's what we'll be working on in January and then finalizing some recommendations for you all in February. Diverse voices and it's just a really opportu, a great opportunity for us to to hear those voices, have different perspectives and talk through what that looks like for our students.
Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing what you bring to us. Next up is the criteria for evaluating the superintendent. There is a, the last form that we had. Again, this will, this will be in after we evaluate him, so we will use this form at least one more time. But if we want to change it or have discussion on changing it, this is a good opportunity. Does anyone have anything to say? I'm looking to see if Polly has anything to say. Hang on. She said, yeah, I told her I'd be watching chat in case she did, so. She says, I'm good. Well, sometimes I can't read very well and, yeah, it's out of angle. Okay. And Brent, did you want to say anything about your evaluation form?
No, but yeah, I'll talk, take us there. We've just been using this for for a while and it's been working on my end, but I welcome any feedback if the board wants to see something new. This is the conversation that we have every year to really kind of find out what tool we want to evaluate your employee. And I welcome those discussions, but this tool has served this purpose in the past.
Okay, hearing nothing else, we'll move on to the next topic, which is the Board Work Session topics for January nineteenth. As you all remember, I think it was last year, we talked about, I know when I was board chair, everyone was like, we need to talk about this. And so we decided at our last calendar that when we had meetings, that only had one meeting a month, that we would work in work sessions on a few so that we could use that time if we needed. So this is a great time to talk about, do we want a work session? And I think we do. And what we want to talk about it at the work session. As Brett already said, one of the topics could possibly be the letter to the Tura. So I don't know if you just want to need to go down or if you all have some ideas.
I'd like to propose, in the board conference that we had, a lot of the conversation was around training, especially around equity training. So I would love to have some sort of conversation around what could possibly be brought and discuss what the budget, what what funding and support we have and how do we want to systematize that sort of education for staff, administration and board as well.
Great idea. Anyone else?
I, I brought this up. I think post-meeting, and it could tie in with equity training for the board, but something about a community engagement type of training or a book study, something that might dovetail into what the staff is learning through the scholastic or utilizing the speaker, the book from the speaker from the summer board conference. So I think that there's some resources out there to potentially get some additional training or that would go along with what our staff is really focusing on, which is community engagement.
And I'd also love, there's some surveys that have gone out, the Panorama Survey. I'd love to learn what the, what the findings were from that. And I think that we've also talked about, and this could have been like a long time ago, about an assessment of what, what is the makeup of the school district. We talk about diverse staff and providing support for the folks that get to live and work here. So I would love to have an engaging conversation around the makeup of the district and the surveys.
Just for clarification, the survey that you were referring to, was that the one that went out to the community and that had other questions or because that was?
Well, we've done some, and we just kind of published some findings from the Family Engagement Survey that we posted today, maybe yesterday, a couple of days ago. But we also have had student surveys and staff surveys as well through that same platform or through a Panorama platform.
There was a survey that was online the other day that was a community-based survey and there was a few questions about the school system. I think there was three. I took it. Sorry, I can't remember. And so I was wondering, my question was, I don't know when that survey will be final. It sounds like something that was in partnership. They asked if we would like to, I guess, ask a few questions and they sound like good questions. So I was just kind of wondering when that finished.
That's from the Long Term Recovery Group that put out that survey, which has a really overarching regional kind of survey and want to gather information. But they were kind enough to ask us if they have, we had specific questions regarding Phoenix Talon residents that are expired survivors. And so that's why you saw something specific to your district. So I don't know when that, I want to say that won't be done until the end of February, maybe March. So I don't anticipate hearing anything from that till the, probably till the end of this year, school year. So and we, that Long Term Recovery Group does have a evening planned for our Spanish-speaking families. I mean, if they just did a facility use, I can't remember to gather more data because sometimes that survey, surveys aren't the best avenue to gather that data, so.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing those results because I, I'm wondering if maybe that's a different, it might be the same population that we've had before, but we might have some different voices being in that survey. So that's really interesting to me. Any other things that we would like to talk about at a work session?
I've had two tutorials already, personal on the financial report that's given each month, but I could always use a refresher in how to read that form and really, because I want to honor the time that you put into putting it together and really try to understand how to look at it. So I don't know if there's a way to have you be part of that and maybe go over where to look or how to look at that to to better utilize that resource.
And I think that, just if I may, the nice thing about having these conversations now is we, and I actually just looked at it today, in March, we do have another work session, which is going to come up pretty quick. So maybe we prioritize what we want to do in February and then what we have, what we can do in March as well. Because, you know, I meant, I thought of some things as well, really kind of giving you a glimpse of the integrated guidance, I guess, template or application we need to send into the state prior to March, which is essentially kicking off our strategic plan. And then you've mentioned that you wanted to learn more about La Clinica or Tiffany volunteered herself in La Clinica to share with the board. But those could actually be program reports and not work sessions. So there's a lot of good things to hear about. It's just we're late, we're late in.
I know that in the past, we had talked about the budgeting and doing something so that the public could hear too. So I would say my vote or opinion would be to move that one to March so that we could advertise it maybe. And even though it's a work session, I think the public would learn a lot too. And it would be right, good timing for the budget. And I don't know if we have a budget opening still or not for on the Budget Committee. I think we still have one opening and so that might be a good opportunity for someone to come and learn and go, oh, I think I can be on the Budget Committee because I think it's kind of scary being on a Budget Committee when you don't know how to read a budget. You don't want to volunteer. So I think that March might be a good time to do that. So do you need any direction, more direction from us to nail down?
No, I think we'll take some notes on this and then we can maybe just kind of narrow it down and put something out there to see, these are the, these are the topics. Do these meet the need and and the timing? Maybe plan February and March a little bit. And then if we need to move some back and forth, we can. But we'll, we'll probably need to get on that first party next week.
Thank you for remembering the budget. I had it, that was the thing that I was going to mention at the beginning and it's the one thing I've forgotten. So, yeah, I think education and simplifying budget reading would be really helpful.
Any other, before I move on, any other topics? If so, you can probably email Brent and Michael and Denise and let them know. I look forward to, I think this is really great that we hadn't done work sessions in a long time and I appreciate the board wanting to spend more time learning and improving our district. And I think it's great that we all have decided that this is something that we really believe in. So thank you, everybody. Next up is Board Policy, BBBA, Board Member Qualifications. Any questions on that?
This is just more aligned with statute and just all red language.
I don't know what this looked like before, but I really liked that I can click on the map and it'll give me a visual representation of where the identifying service areas, I don't even know, the zones, which zones belong to what, I'm such a visual learner, that made it super nice for me to look at. Thank you once again, Denise.
I just might say, she was commended by OSBA on how she does link her agendas and board book and all that sort of stuff. That's not usual. And I mean, we've been on board book for a total of two and a half months or something. But it's amazing and just a good resource for our community too, to be able to have access to the discussions boards are having. So thank you, Denise.
For some reason, my board book blew up and now I'm, after we're saying how great it is, it's great. And even though I was in the, no. And even though I've been in the tech industry for like twenty years, I am not tech savvy some days and today is one. So I apologize. I'm scrolling back. Next, so any other things on BBA? Okay, moving on to Board Policy, IFE, Curriculum Guides and Course Outlines? Next is Policy IGAI, Human Sexuality, AIDS, HIV, Sexual Transmitted Diseases, Health Education.
I like this policy. I'm a huge supporter of sex and growth and development education in schools. And, yeah, I just, I appreciate the way certain things are spelled out. I, I just support this a lot.
And this is an ad from an administrative rule that just got passed as well recently.
I just have a question about the wording at the bottom on number one. Mostly just the end part. After relationships with an, in, uninfected partners for adults. So it's at the very end of the policy. It says, number one, promotes abstinence for school-aged youth and mutually monogamous relationships with an uninfected partner for adults. It's just weirdly worded, I think.
We'll, we'll check on that, not wording and praising when we bring it back.
Becca, where, where were you looking? It took me a while to get to page.
So it's for Policy IGAI.
Oh, I see it.
And it's the, yeah, it's the number one on the bottom.
I'm going to ask you to grab the mic because Polly's on and she probably wants to hear.
So in our health curriculum with our older students, when we're talking about sexually transmitted diseases, there's really that maturity of like before you engage. So in our health curriculum with our older students, when we're talking about sexually transmitted diseases, there's really that maturity of like before you engage in sexual activity, you need to be mature enough to have conversations about it before. Talk with your parents and medical providers because we don't want transmission of infections and diseases, so we encourage abstinence. But if somebody, you know, a student is taught, if they feel they're ready, is to talk about prevention of transmission of disease and infection. So you can see like we promote abstinence, but then also mutually monogamous relationships of people that have been like. Tested for sexually transmitted diseases or that you you trust aren't carrying infection or disease because a lot of diseases can be carried without signs or symptoms. So it's just, it's a safety of trying to spread transmission of disease or even information as, you know, kids get older and are adults is promoting safety. So uninfected means having that maturity to have conversations with part potential partners about protecting yourself from disease or infection. Does that make sense? So it's, I don't know if I, I know I don't explain it as well as the health feature does, but it's really getting into that conversation with our more mature students.
Thank you, Tiffany. Any other questions on this? Okay, moving on to Board Policy IK Academic Achievement. Any questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Rick. I know in the summer conference, that was something that they mentioned for engagement was to make sure that language of, yeah. Like Nancy said, caring adults or something in that where, yeah, caregiver, something what was vague were where it could be, you know, not just parents.
And caregiver has been a word that has been utilized more frequently, given the fact that there's so many mixed family situations. So there's so many children that are in the foster care or with grandparents or aunts and uncles or siblings and so forth, so just to make it more broad and inclusive, the definition of caregiver. Has been utilized. I'm not sure what the state would like to use here, but caregiver is, it's typically more inclusive.
We have to be careful if we start making changes to policies. Oh, tracking, okay, yes.
That would be a suggestion for me, but I'm not sure what others feel.
I feel just caregivers, that's what I'm hearing at OSBA is that I I'm kind of, kind of shocked that it says parents because that's something that. OSBA has been talking about a lot is is caregiver or caring adult or or. So I would say not have the word parent in there at all, from what I, the. The information I've been getting on engaging families is that you do something more inclusive, so I agree with Nancy.
We will make that change, send it up to OSBA and bring the final version back the recommendation.
Good catch, Rick. Thank you very much. Any, anything else on this before I move on? Okay, review of the audit report.
So, well, this should be fairly easy, but the plan is that we wanted you to receive the audit tonight. And then we will go in more in depth in our meeting in February and so you can look at that and then we will decide who wants to share that report with the with the Board. Next time, whether, you know, Rick's traditionally done that. I know Dawn and Michael also were at that meeting as well, so. But we wanted to share this. I do want to just say and commend Yasmin's work. This was the most difficult and time-consuming audit that I think we've ever had, just with all the grants and the amount of monies and the bond and. It seems like everybody had an influx of federal funds with Esser, but not everybody had millions of dollars in bonds too. There's, there's, you know, just a handful of districts that are managing those as well. And then a smaller number of districts are receiving a number of grants too, based on applying for them, so. Yasmin and her team are amazing and and got a tremendous report from the auditors and we look forward to sharing more of that next board meeting.
Yes, I think a round of applause. Anything else on that? Okay, moving on, we're close to the end here. I got the draft agenda up. The next is the draft agenda. It is in our board books, our blue folders. Any questions on that? And then my next question is, anything else you want to add before I end this lovely meeting? Moving on.
Are we gonna add JFCJ to any sort of meeting anytime soon?
Yeah, we can, we can look at bringing it down here soon if we want to. Maybe we can check with Michael the next time and see, but it's not on this one. But we were waiting for. You know, people to be in attendance and so we can start.
Anything else? Okay, thank you all for attending and such a great meeting. I adjourn this meeting.